All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is a little bit after 6 o'clock. We are going to have the City Council Truth in Taxation Public Hearing and Input Meeting. Please, City Administrator, please note that all of the City Council and one more are present. We've got an extra for this meeting. Everybody, I appreciate you guys coming out. I do want to preface this meeting with, I know that the words "truth in taxation" ends up being a misnomer, and I want to be very clear what this meeting is. What this meeting is, is to discuss how your taxes are going to be used with the city, how we're spending the taxes, not necessarily how much in taxes you have been assessed, or the valuation of your homes, or the percentage of what your taxes have went up. We do get this every year, especially when there are raises to your taxes. The city did raise the levy this year, but with the city raising the levy, just based on the nature of how the taxes work, even if we raise the taxes 5%, some people's goes up and some people's goes down. It's just the way that the piece of pie actually works. So if some people's values of their houses went down, they would pay a little bit less. If the values of some people's went up, they would pay a little bit more. But the purpose of this particular meeting is to discuss how the taxes that are being brought in are being spent within the city. With that being said, we'll start the presentation with our City Administrator, Ken Anderson.
Thank you very much, members of the Council and Mayor. I think what I'd like to do is walk through the handout of materials and just do that in very brief summary form, so that the Council and the people in the audience have some basic understanding of what's involved or what's associated with this packet. And I'll walk through that information and talk about the implications on the budget and the levy. So the first sheet attached and behind the agenda is a draft resolution that we've prepared, and it says at the top, "Resolution Approving the Final Tax Levy Collectible in 2020 and the 2020 Budget for the City of International Falls." And so this is a resolution, or the form of a resolution, that needs to be presented to the county auditor before the end of the year, before December 30th. And what we've done is we're anticipating that we'll have this public hearing, we'll receive all public input from the public, both in writing and verbally here at the public input meeting. And then if the Council envisions any changes that need to be made to the budget, discuss those at the Committee of the Whole Meeting after this input tonight on December 9th. We'll make the appropriate revisions, and then on December 16th, you'll have this resolution to consider for adoption. About three pages in, you'll see that there's an Exhibit A to the resolution, and that says budget and levy for 2020. It's in smaller print. And this is the principal document that really summarizes the budget by fund. So in the left column, you'll see Fund, and then you'll see 101, General Government. Under General Government, there's a number of different departments, and you can see here we've got listed Public Works, Police, Administration, Fire, Facilities, et cetera. You can see, moving to the right in the third column, it says Expenditures. So you can see how much monies we've budgeted for the 2020 budget in the overall General Government Fund, 101, and that amount is $5,811,450. We've identified revenues there of $4,923,029. Some of that money is, there's transfers from other funds, and you can see what portion of the general fund is paid from the adopted levy in the far right column. So for 2020, as the budget is currently proposed, $1,140,071 of the proposed levy will go towards paying the General Government Fund. And again, that same approach follows through the rest of the Exhibit A document, and you can see where the totals are for all of the funds. The total for 2020 is about a $14,72,318 expenditure budget with revenues of $12,149,515. And then transfers are listed here from other funds and two other funds, increase in reserves of about $5,5519.73. And you see at the bottom, or at the middle of the page where it says "total," the adopted levy for 2020 is proposed to be $2,931,031,036. We identify a little bit more detail, or at least history below that total row. And on the right side of the page, in the lower right column, you can see what the history of the levy has been. So in 2012, our levy was $2,109,415. It didn't change in 2013, 2014, and then we've had some incremental increases since, starting in 2015 and going forward. We actually had a 2% levy increase in 2015, a 4% in 2016, a 5% in 2017. 2018 and 2019 were both 9% increases, and the proposed percentage increase for 2020 is 5%. And so it's a reduction over the increases that we've had for each of the past two years. But the total new dollars that we get from a 5% levy increase is $139,572. And it's really not a lot of money, if you consider, you know, the percentage might sound high, but it's not a lot of new money, just given what we currently levy. We are a significant benefactor of local government aid, and local government aid is a funding source that the state provides to communities based on a formula that is applied statewide to communities. You can see that our history with local government aid, back in 2014, we got about $3,975,000 in local government aid. For 2020, that number is up to $4,293,898, and that's a $163,942 increase over what we received in 2019. So the percentage increase in local government aid, or the aid that we're receiving for the state projected in 2020, is going to be about a 3.97% increase. And this has been something that the legislator, as legislature, has wrestled with for a number of years. This amount brings the City of International Falls and other communities to the same funding levels that used to be provided by the state way back in 2002. Over the years, in the early 2000s, we actually lost over $1 million in local government aid because of state budget shortfalls. So those local government aids did not get dispersed to cities, and so it was a significant hardship on our city because we're really dependent on our local government aid from the state. The last city I worked in got no money in local government aid, because we had such a high tax base with a lot of affluent or highly valued houses on lake shore properties. So we didn't get any local government aid at all. I would just identify the appropriations that are listed and where they're going. The total amount for appropriations projected in 2020 is $170,474. And there's some others in the other category. The city's share of funding the local costs of the airport are $341,070, and that's for operations. And then through our joint powers agreement with the school district for the International Falls Recreation Commission, that's identified in Fund 211, we contribute $83,000 to those costs. So the total for appropriations and other is $424,070 in 2020. Moving on, then, I've included for the packet of information a preliminary property tax levy for 2020. This is a publication that the Department of Revenue from the state of Minnesota came out with on November 14, 2019. And basically, the process is, is we set a preliminary levy back in September, as do all local governments in the state of Minnesota. We do that before September 30th and certify that to the county auditors, who report that to the state. Our levy can be reduced from the amount that we certify in September, but it cannot be increased. And so based on that information, the Department of Revenue combines all that information, and it shows what the proposed increases are in 2020, based on those preliminary property taxes statewide. I've highlighted on the second page of that, cities, and you'll see it in yellow, there, yellow highlight, the 2020 preliminary property tax levies for cities only in the state of Minnesota is about $2.71 billion, and that is an increase of 7.5% statewide for just cities. So what that tells me is that our proposed preliminary levy of 5% is actually 2.5% of the combined levies for all cities in the state of Minnesota. So we're actually below the preliminary levies that other cities have provided, but we don't know what amount they might further reduce those levies by. So I think we're right in line with our proposed 5% levy increase. I have a memo dated December 2nd to the Council and Mayor, and it has highlights in the summary of the 2020 proposed budget. I don't think that I want to highlight anything in particular, other than to say that we're very dependent on local government aid, which I pointed out. And the budget, again, reflects priorities that the City Council has established, and sometimes those priorities change from council to council and from year to year. But I think the last couple of years, the City Council's been very consistent in really trying to focus on our public infrastructure needs and funding improvements to our roads, streets, sidewalks, curb and gutter, street lighting, alleys, as well as the sewer and water systems. And so we've tried to focus on that and providing funding for that. What's unique this year about revenue sources is that this is the first year, full year, that we'll be budgeting a sales and use tax revenues. So back in November of 18, the referendum was approved by the voters in the City of International Falls, authorizing a 1% sales and use tax. The Department of Revenue started collecting that October 1st of 2019, and so this is the first full year that we have anticipated sales tax revenues. Again, based on the historical average, we're assuming that there'll be about $800,000 in gross revenues received by the city each year. A small amount of that needs to go to an admin fee that the Department of Revenue charges the city. It's roughly $16,000 to $19,000 a year. The rest of it can be used by the city to pay for some of these improvements that I outlined in public infrastructure only. And so the City Council in this budget is proposing that we'll issue bonds sometime next spring, probably March, perhaps as late as April. And the rough estimate of that bond issue size is about $7.3 million. And then in 2020 and 2021, the Council's identified a number of local streets that will be improved, using those sales and use tax monies, as well as some of those monies will be going towards the Highway 53 reconstruction project that will also be occurring in 2020 and 2021. Right now, the estimated local share for the Highway 53 project is about a million and a quarter. And again, that's going to be subject to change, depending on what the actual bids come in like. MINDOT right now is anticipating soliciting bids in March and collecting those bids in April. So we'll have firm numbers by April, but they do require that the city provide its local share before they award any bids this spring. So we'll be including in that bond issue our share of those local fees. On page four of my highlight memo, I've identified the history of the property tax levies and the percentage increases. You can see those at the top of the page. Local government aid, as I pointed out, is increasing about $163,000, or 3.97%. And we're, it's a very important revenue source for the city moving forward. I've identified under the ambulance service that we have a significant fund deficit, which has been stabilized the last few months here this year because of a rate increase that the Council imposed effective January 1st of 2019. So I've indicated here that that rate increase was estimated to generate about $300,000 in additional annual revenue. When we get to the end of this year, we'll be focusing on that revenue stream after we've had the bulk of the year to collect interest or ambulance earnings and see what kind of adjustments we need to make to operations to try and not only break even, but also get ahead on our revenue so we can offset this deficit. EDA funding is about the same, $5,000 this year. It's been the same the last several years, and it's just for some professional service fees and office expenses. Public Works and Infrastructure, I talked about the $7 million, plus or minus that it will be going towards the road projects, and we'll be using bond proceeds to pay for those. Highway 53 project, I've already talked about. We've set aside and transferred into the Permanent Improvement Fund about $800,000. $400,000 of that is transferred in from the city's water fund, payable from water utility fees. $400,000 is paid by the sewer fund, which is paid by sanitary sewer fees. And then we're also levying about $275,094 from property tax levy money to go into that fund for 2020, and so it'll exceed just over $1,075,000. We need to reexamine the water fund and the sewer fund. And 2019 is the first year where we had those separate. In past years, we've had them combined, and so we need to examine and see what the, how the water revenues are coming in, and whether or not they're adequately offsetting our water expenses in the water fund, and the same with the sanitary sewer fund. Generally speaking, though, I think staff is recommending that we consider a rate increase in 2020, because we're showing a small revenue amount that exceeds expenditures by about $43,000 in the water fund. The sewer fund is experiencing about a $20,000 shortfall, just based on what our revenues are through October of 2019. Airport fund, I talked a little bit about the fact that we completed in 2019 the Phase Two of the Airport Terminal Project. We're co-partners with Kuchin County in owning the airport, and we pay, we share in the local expenses to operate the airport, as well as the operating, I'm sorry, the capital expenses for the airport. We're a significant benefactor in that because our county is considered a distressed county, we get 95% FAA funding for all capital improvements to the airport. The state funds roughly 2.5% of the remaining share, and that only leaves 2.5% to be split evenly between the city and the county for those improvement costs. So we're in the second year of a multi-year runway reconstruction project, and that should be done in approximately three years. Pointed out that the city currently is debt-free. The EDA has some outstanding bonds for paying for the Voyagers National Park Headquarters Building, and those are paid 100% by a lease that we have with the federal government. So there's no cost to local taxpayers, and it has a significant reserve fund in place for any building maintenance that might be necessary. We have three union contracts, and all of those are expiring at the end of 2020. So next fall, we'll be entering into negotiations with all three of our bargaining units. And in the past, we've had three-year agreements with each of them, so we anticipate moving forward with three-year contracts, starting negotiations next fall. And again, the appropriations for other agencies and functions is about $170,000. The remaining portion of the handout, you can see the 2020 budget summary, and it shows it by different agencies that we're funding and the history from 2016 through 2020. Next page is a colored pie chart, and it shows the 2019 budgeted revenues, and it's color-coded, and you can see the gross dollar amounts for the ambulance fees, the sewer fees, the local government aid, property tax levy, et cetera. We provided 2019 so that you can readily compare it with the proposed 2020 budgeted revenues. That's on the next page. Again, a colored pie chart. Following page is the 2019 budgeted expenditures, and then the 2019 budgeted revenues, I'm sorry, expenditures for 2020, again, for comparison purposes. The following page just shows the history and the percent dollar increases and decreases, and percentage increases and decreases in property tax levies and local government aids, and that's for the last 10 years, 2009 through 2019, so you can see the history And then we have another chart that shows the total dollar volumes, and I would, it's a kind of printed sideways on the sheet, but you can see in 2003, the city was not paid $398,000 in local government aids that was certified and to be paid to us. 2008, we lost $222,000. 2009, there was $138,000 due to the city. In 2010, $345,000. And again, we did not get those aids because of state revenue shortfalls, but the state is working to get back to those 2002 levels, and 2020 is the first year that they've been able to do that. Final few pages, two pages, you can see some bar charts, again, that show the history with local government aid from 2006 to 2020, and combined local government aid and property tax levy trends from 2010 to 2020. Again, 2020 is only proposed, and you can see those trends for both local government aid and property tax levies. Final page in this handout is something that I just want to draw your attention to. It's, the city is the owner of the building that the Chamber of Commerce and Convention and Visitors Bureau rents from us, and because of that, we have to pay property taxes on it. There was no change in the property value of that building, and so the estimated market value in both 2019 and 2020 was $90,100. The taxable value was $69,600. But I provided this so you can see what the differences are with our 5% levy increase in 2020 over 2019. The impact for that particular building is about $45.56, but it's a 4.72% increase, not a full 5% increase. And again, that's because there's been some increase in the tax base in International Falls, and because of that increase in the tax base, it offsets what our increased levy is actually going to be. So the net effect of the proposed levies by the county, the city, the school district, and the special taxing district is, is with no change in valuation, is our, the tax on that building is going up about 3.4% projected for 2020, not the full 5% that we've got our levy set for. So that shows an example of what the impacts are. It'll be different on individual property owners, depending on whether or not their levies increased, gone up or not, so. So Mayor, that concludes my comments, and it's kind of a brief rundown of the levy. I guess the key document to look at is Exhibit A. It shows where we have expenditures projected and revenues coming in for various funds in the city, but the net impact is, is roughly a 5% levy increase proposed for 2020.
So just a quick follow-up on a piece of it. Last year, the Menards lawsuit that we ended up losing value of what Menards was, which caused us to have to pay back monies to Menards. And now this year, obviously, they had to pay less in taxes, which makes that pie smaller, which has the potential of raising value, or raising taxes of other people. That's another piece that gets factored into the net tax capacity as well, correct?
That is correct, and for 2019, this year, our revenues are about $117,000 less than budgeted because of the reduction in value at the Menards store, as well as a tax clerk settlement for some of the overhead power lines elsewhere in the county, and it had an impact, reduction of just over $15,000 for us. So the total was about $117,000 less in budgeted revenues for 2019.
So, okay, I'll just leave it at that. I have some other thoughts on that, too, with some, the hotel being built coming up next year. That will also be additional taxes in our community, which could then therefore lower the taxes for others, depending on how much they get valued at and such. But at this time, I would open up the floor to public input. If anyone would like to come up, please state your name and address and discuss. Please come on up and state your name and address. Not that we don't know who we are, but for the record, we have to have it.
Julie Maelstrom, 904 Sixth Street. Okay, I do have a couple of questions here. Does it have to be 5% Ken, to raise our taxes? I mean, does it have to be? Can it be lower? Or anybody?
Yes, it can be, at this point, it can be lower, it cannot be higher. At this point, we would have to go through the budget again and cut additional things out to balance the budget, but with the projects that we have coming forward in this year, and I think that between the sewer, water, street, all of the infrastructure that the citizens had asked for us to do, that is a piece of it, for sure.
I realize it, but you do realize what an older community we have, and they're going to be taxed right out of their houses, some of these people. You need to think about that, and when you go over what we're giving to different people, we should be matching whatever the county puts in. I don't think the city taxpayers should have to pay more, because a lot of times, there's more county people using the facility. For example, the BACUS. That amount of money should be cut way down to what the county gives toward the BACUS, and the city should match that amount. That, some of that money can go to what we need. Okay, the TV funds. That was, when they put that in, that was voted against, and the Council went ahead and did it anyway. The people said no, and the Council went ahead and did it. So really, they should be cut back. They shouldn't get $10,000, they should get about half. How much does the county give? You need to really start thinking about some of this stuff here to match the county, because they won't give us any more, the rec department. How much does the county give toward the rec department?
The county isn't, well, I'm going to let you go through all of your points, and then I will go back.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm just saying, because when I was on the Council, the rec department gave nothing. I mean, commissioners gave nothing, county commissioners. So are we paying more for everything, and there's a lot of the county people that are using our facilities, whatever? Why should the city people have to pay for everybody else?
Number one, I think you have a very valid point, and you and I have had this discussion multiple times over. I think you are making a very valid point. However, the KCCTV, where you see the $10,000, that comes in on a cable peg channel fee. So the people that have MidContinent, or I'm sorry, yeah, MidContinent, the people that have MidContinent, they are paying $1 every month to utilize that, which over the course of the year, it actually comes out to be $12,000. And historically, up until now, the city has not given that money directly back to KCCTV, but I think we have started to see the value of what KCCTV has to offer with allowing live streaming, live streaming of our high school sports. They're doing our events. They were just at the, this last weekend for our community parade. They're at our Fourth of July. They're basically serving as an opportunity for us to be able to show those same seniors that are not able to get out, what's going on in the community, serving this council. You're going to be on TV in a couple of days. But with that being said, that $10,000 does come directly from the people that are utilizing that service.
Okay, but how much is the county giving toward it?
But the county doesn't give anything to that.
This is what I'm, this is what I'm saying, just a minute. This is what I'm saying, is why should the city taxpayers have to be paying for everything and the county people still get to use our stuff, is where I have a real problem.
Please.
Two things. Number one, if you live in the county and you have MidCo, you paid that tax. So that is, that the KCCTV is actually, that is a tax that comes on your MidContinent Communications Bill. I don't have cable, but I have cable internet. I still pay. I still pay that tax. So if you have midco in the county, you pay it. Number two, the questions about the county and what the county is or isn't doing needs to be directed to the county commissioners, because ultimately, it's up to them to create that budget and decide what they're paying. We can't force them to pay more money.
Then, I, I understand that. But what I'm trying to say is then, whatever they are giving, whatever little bit they are giving, we need to drop our prices down and match them and we'll have extra money to fix our roads and our streets.
They give us $10,000 towards the library. There's no way that if we put $10,000 into the library, it would close.
But they never used to pay for the library.
Is it 10?
They, they have a minimum amount that they have to pay by state law.
When I was on the council, they didn't pay for the library, they didn't pay for AMAS, they didn't pay for rec.
If we matched their, if we matched their contribution, the library wouldn't stay open for a month.
But I think the points that, and I don't want to get into an argument on any of this.
No, I don't.
But I would point out that the city is in a joint powers agreement with the school district and that's where the recreation commission comes in. And the, the school district is taxing outside the county in, in that area of the school district. And that's how we fund the, the recreation commission. They pay half, the city pays half. So it's actually the school district and it isn't directly just the people inside the city limits of International Falls. It, it is people that are out county, Rainier, Dove Island, just south of International Falls. They're all paying.
83,000 also, like we are?
They actually may be paying more.
Works for me.
It, it depends on the amount of students that come in based off of their, their, their funds for the recreation.
Okay. And for the airport fund too, is the county, they paying 30, 3,000, whatever?
Yes.
Are they paying the same amount as we are paying right here?
Quick answer, yes.
Thank you. Okay. That's just basically.
Yep, I understand.
But I definitely really believe we need to knock it way down on the Bacchus. They've been in business for quite a while. We started them out to get going and I don't mind helping people, but it's time that they go on their own. Nobody pays for my stuff, your stuff, whatever. 55,000 is way too much money. They get donations, they get whatever.
Understandable.
And I'm just saying, that's still way too much money. They should match down to whatever the county give them and you work it out just like we do our household.
Yep.
That's all I got to say.
Thank you so much, Julie. Does anybody else want to come and address the Truth in Taxation Board? Any input? All right, then, hearing none. Oh, did, did you want to come, sir? Yes.
My name is Mahendra Patel.
Yes.
From 2331 Highway 53, Desine. Reasons to why I come here, because my property is, property takes almost 12,000 last year. This one is almost 36,000.
Okay. Can you tell me what, what the assessed value of the building was?
Before is 376, right now is almost 600,000 increase.
Okay.
979.
And those are the, and that, that specifically would be something that you'd have to talk to the, the county tax assessor for.
Because what, where did I have to talk with?
The county tax assessor. In the spring, they mail out a, a property tax statement, which says what the value of your, your, your vehicle, your building goes up to. And then at that time, they have a, they have a, can't think of the name of it.
Open book meeting is what.
Yeah, it's an open book meeting where they can go in and you, you, you state your case and they will go back and forth on what the value is. But once, once that period ends, then you accepted the value of your building and then your taxes go up based off of, of what.
Is I can talk with someone?
You could talk to Len Peterson at the county. Yep, that, that's who does the taxes, the assessments on the building of how much the building is worth. And then coincidentally, that's how, based off of whatever your, your building is worth.
One year, this house increased 600,000.
Yes. And that would, that would be the, the form that came out in April or May, I believe. And that, that would have been when to talk to the county.
Contact phone numbers, I'm not live here, I live in city.
Yes.
I need something contact, person to I can contact to him.
Yeah, I, we can get you that information. Yes.
Mayor, if I may, just to add to what you offered is, you can contact the county assessor's office anytime. I would probably advise you, if you have some concerns with what they did with your valuation, is to do that anytime now. But as the mayor pointed out, there will be a notice that goes out that talks about what your proposed evaluation is, and it gives you an opportunity to speak to that. And they call it the open book meeting. We usually try to publicize that, we'll know it in March too, and so we'll, we try to let the public know that. But you can visit with the county assessor's office at any time about how they valued your property. They'll be able to tell you, is it based on other sales in the community that have increased your value? If you've got a building permit to make improvements to your building, sometimes those will lead to increases in valuation. But that responsibility is a county responsibility, but they do that for properties in the city limits of International Falls, Rainier, Little Fork, everywhere in the county. So the city council doesn't have any jurisdiction over what your property is valued at. The purpose of this meeting is to have a public information meeting, just talking about the, what the budget is for 2020 and the levy that we've put in place. That is based on your valuation, but we have no control over what your valuation is and that's why you should talk with the county assessor's office.
Another motel in Americheen, he just increased for 18,000. He have bigger property, bigger revenue wise, and new property, mice compared to old property, he's increased just 18,000.
And, and part of it too is based off of sales of, of hotels, different size. And I believe that you may have, did you just buy recently? It wouldn't be based off of.
No, this motel we buy in 2013, means last five years. And when you say, nothing increase anything, and plus it's coming another motel in town, this house we can afford.
Yeah. Yeah, those would be questions you need to have with, with Len Peterson.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any.
Hello, sir. Bob Sweeney, International, 809 15th Street East, International Falls.
Okay.
I ended up with this thing here, it says that my property value went up 36.71%.
Okay.
Okay, your actual proposed, for actual for 2019 was 380 and that went up to 621, which is 63.24%. So I'm not understanding this here 5% increase, that's a whole lot more than 5%.
It's, I, it's net tax capacity and, and it's, it's a, it's a hard one to explain. But basically what it is, is we have a set amount of, I don't even know how to explain it. Thank you, Ken.
Mr., may I ask, did the taxable value of your property change? On that, you'll have the 2019 value and the 2020.
36.71%.
His property value changed, not the, so it's much like.
But the taxes for the city part went up 63%.
Because the property value went up so much that.
That's more than the 5%.
It, it would be, because it's based on the other, the other value. It's the.
Because you got a bigger piece of the pie now, because you're.
What I'm saying is the 36, 36% increase in the value would not have brought that up as high as it did.
And Ken?
Mayor, I believe, and, and I can't speak to the exact percentages, but I, I know that there's, there's tiers. So you're taxed at a certain percentage for the first $72,000 or $75,000 in residential property. And then the percentage goes up for values from 72 or 75,000 up to, or above. And so that's why it would look like more of an exponential increase, because you're getting further into that higher tax rate, and I believe it's 2%, but I haven't looked at it for a number of years. So again, as we explained with the previous gentleman, if you talk to the county assessor's office, they can give you the facts about what they took into consideration to increase the valuation on your property. And then they can also talk about how your property is taxed, where the percentage, where that tier starts and stops again with the next level and he could explain.
What I was referring to was just specifically this, this city portion.
Right.
It just had 63% increase in the value of the property, only they're claiming it went up 36%. A whole lot more than the 5%.
What's the total valuation of your property?
They increased it to 93,000.
And so that's what I'm saying is, so with that increase, you were in the lower tier of only being taxed at 1%. It goes to creating what your tax capacity is for your property. Once you go over that 72 or that $75,000 number, then it's taxed at a higher percentage and you're over that now. So that's why that amount isn't just a direct correlation. But the county assessor could explain that too, or the county auditor's office.
I know I'm not supposed to say that to you, but why was the increase? That's what I don't understand.
Well, and again.
Check with the county to find out why they increased it that much? And I don't understand that, because we live in the city, so why would the county make the rules that we have to live by? Like where I came from, if you live in the county and you send your children to the city school, you pay the tuition. Even if you own property in the county, unless you actually live, I mean, in the city, unless you actually live there, in the city, you still have to pay for your residences in the county, you have to pay tuition to your child to come into the city. And I feel like we're getting ripped off.
Well, Mayor, it's nobody's intention to rip anybody off, but I just want to say that in the state of Minnesota and in Koochichin County, the county assessor sets the valuations on all properties in the county, be it in the city or in unincorporated parts of the county. So they set the valuation for everybody. And they are by law required to set the value at between 90% and 105% of what the actual sales are in those areas of the city, as well as the county. And so they periodically increase those if the sales for other properties similar to yours are higher, then they need to increase your valuations. And they will only, not only your property, but others will be increased. If for some reason the sales are lower valued than what they have it set at, they will lower it. And they've done that historically here in the past too. So those are issues that take into consideration. But they look at every property specifically to that property. So if you had any improvements made to your property, if you added a garage, or you added a bedroom, or a shed, or you fixed up your house and got a permit to do that, they will look at your property and revalue it based on the amount of improvements you may or may not have put on your property. So, but again, that's not anything that the city council has any control over. It's, it's done specifically by the county assessor's office and his staff. And, and I would just encourage you to go talk to them and they have a very analytical process in place and a checklist of things that they look at. And they can explain to you in great detail about what they did to your property and why. And then you can have a conversation with them. If you don't like the conclusions that they came up with, then the hearing that the mayor talked about in April or May of each year, you can go to that and have the county board appeal your case and make an argument to them. And they can actually make adjustments to what the county assessor's value is. But it's not anything that our city council has any jurisdiction over, unfortunately. So appreciate your being here and your interest, but I'm, I'm sorry, we can't really help you out with that.
Okay, I have another question that I've wondered about for years. When I first moved, my name's Linda Sweeney, 809 15th Street East. When I first moved up here in 1977, we lived in what was South International Falls. We lived on Fourth Avenue West, which was a gravel road, and we was on the short part. But that gravel road was maintained, but we always wondered, well, we lived there for nine years, I think it was nine years. Anyway, I was always looking forward if it would ever be paved. But then over the years, the consolidation of International Falls and South International Falls, and one of the meetings I went to, and one of the things that was mentioned was the roads or the streets or whatever. Well, when we combined, you know, these roads were going to be fixed, these streets were going to be fixed. We were going to have these nice, smooth roads. Okay, we moved over to 15th Street, we weren't consolidated yet. So International Falls would come out and they'd do a little patch road on their side and the South International Falls come out and do a little patch. Okay, this was in 1986, we moved over there. Okay, finally, they did do a paving project, but it stopped at the avenue before they got into our block. And our street, and the former mayor, he came out, I think it was last winter, but anyway, it's like Humpty Dumpty or Pahoe Avenue or Mud Ho Avenue, you know? And that's, so our city taxis, I mean, I know that's expensive to run the city and everything, but I still feel the amount of taxis that we're paying, you should be able to walk on your street without worrying about tripping in a hole or, you know, and I just, and that's one of the things I'm concerned about. Are we ever going to have our streets in International Falls in a better situation? And I'm excited that there's going to be this new hotel come in and all that, but that Pleasant Avenue. Now, from what I read, and I may not have understood, but the city is very willing to get that street paved and fixed for that corporation. So I'm just concerned about our, our streets and not just, you know, because there's a lot of people, when you get older, you don't have a good balance. And when you don't have sidewalks to walk on, and you got to walk on the street, on the road. And I think by this time, we should have better roads. The parking lot at Senior Citizens is a disgrace. I mean, really, for a small town that always seems to take pride in everything, and then concerned about these old people that can't get out and mow their lawns and all that. And then you come through town and you see all this stuff. Those are the things I'm concerned about and like our tax dollars.
That right there is what this meeting is for. And you have hit it right on the head, ma'am. I, I got to tell you, everything you just discussed has been things that we have been working for the last six months for. And I'd like to call on our, our Commissioner Brokaw in the back. He, he is going to tell you things that you might want to hear. Might, I don't know.
Ma'am, I will be the first to tell you 15th Street is awful. And it is scheduled to be redone in 2020.
The entire street? You're not going to stop at the corner avenue?
No. But on top of that, right now, we have engineering in process to do 84 blocks of street in International Falls in 2020. It's going to be one of the largest road projects in. Now, when I say 84 blocks, that, oh, we've got a pot of money. That is our goal is to do 84 blocks. If, if we can do 84 blocks with that money, fine. If not, we may only be able to do 80 blocks. Or if the prices come in, we may be able to do 90 blocks. But you're going to see a ton of road projects start in 2020. And I'm proud of what the city council's done. I appreciate the citizens helping to vote the sales tax in, but I hope in the next five years, you're going to see a lot of progress. And yes, your street will be done in 2020.
Could you just follow up on one last thing, Commissioner Brokaw?
Yes.
She mentioned, she mentioned that broken up parking lot at the Senior Citizen Center. Are we doing anything with that?
Right now, we have $80,000 budgeted for parking lot. We're, I'm not saying it's going to be that parking lot, but over the next five years, our plan is, we've had an assessment done on all our parking lots, our city parking lots, and we are starting to pack the way up them also. On top of water projects, sewer projects, we've got a lot of work coming up. Definitely in 2020, 2021, the one thing is, is that what you're going to see is, a lot of the roads that we do are not the worst roads.
Except for 15th.
15th is bad. 15th is another unique. 15th Street is actually not a city street, it's a municipal state aid road. So it's a different funding mechanism for 15th Street. But the one thing you're going to see is, all of our roads are rated 1 through 5s. 1 being brand new, 5 being a total rebuild, it's totally shot. The one thing about a number 5 is, it costs five times as much as your 2s and 3s. Okay? So what our plan is, is to try and become proactive rather than reactive, rather than waiting until a road is totally destroyed. And the one thing the city's been very good at is. And the one thing the city's been very good at is rebuilding things. We're not very good at taking care of things. So we're trying to implement a long-term plan where we take care of the roads that we have before they're totally destroyed, and peck away at the ones that are shot. The problem is, we could go after the ones that are totally shot right now, and nobody would see it, it wouldn't make a difference, okay? So you're going to see a lot of 2s and 3s, which are overlays and milling overlays, and you're going to see us slowly start to get away with the ones that are totally shot. So, but let's have this conversation next year at this time, and if you haven't seen a major difference, then I can make a good butt chewing.
All right, so is there anybody else that would like to address the council? All right. With that being said, with nobody else coming forward, we will close the public hearing, and we will move forward with the budget at our December 16th meeting. Thank you.